...preservations of college by the Grissom High School oral to see followed by the pledge of allegiance by Edward and Atassie.
...to the flag of the United States of America. To the glory of the Constitution, on my nation, on our ground, and to the glory of the Constitution.
We want to recognize our special guests, and I'm sure I missed some, I saw a school board representative for District One Laura McCollum, I think the elected Representative of School Board Walker McGinnis for District Four, and David Blair from District Two, he will be the actual way the school board representative. We want to thank Ms. Colenke for a Grissom High School principal, we want to thank the board, the AP crew, the WHT News 19, for all that have done to support Grissom and TSA, and also for their wonderful use of their programs. We'd like to thank Grissom faculty and students, the student moderators, and our District Three City Council candidates Walt Hennessy and Jenny Robinson, and School Board Melissa Merrill and Anson Mills. Our special thanks goes to our guest moderator Steve Johnson from WHT News 19, answer. And now we're going to turn it up over to Steve. Thank you very much. Please give him a big applause.
Okay, I have some housekeeping I want to take care of before we get started. I'll explain to you what's going on. Okay, the audience has been encouraged to submit questions. We're going to use it as part of both the City Council and the Global Education debates. I don't expect this to happen, but we're actually with the audience not to call up, not to do, not to make any kind of, any kind of demonstration whether you are for or against the candidate. We'd like these candidates to answer the questions without any interruptions. And I don't expect this to happen, but say somebody did get a bit demonstrative, we have security, and if it really gets bad, you'll be escorted out of the auditorium. But that's not going to happen, I'm sure. But I really admire that by. Okay, there will be time limits on all the questions, some thirty seconds, some one minute, there will be some rebuttal at one point, those will be thirty seconds, and the timing will be strictly enforced, there's a lot that you can't see from out there, but the candidates can see right down there, and it tells them where they are and they're answering. Now, I'm not just going to abruptly, thirty seconds, if they're still talking, I don't know what that was, if they're still talking, I'm just not going to stop, but if they run over a few seconds, I will stop. Okay, so we're just going to be there, everybody. The candidates may not interrupt each other, I don't expect them to do that, they haven't done it in the past, no matter how much they want to say wrong. There will be some rebuttal or rebuttal, as I said, when we ask questions, if the candidates submitted their opponents. The candidates will be given sixty seconds to issue a closing statement at the end of the City Council and the Board of Education debates. Are we ready? Okay, why don't we get with our City Council candidates first? Play one for your long night. Our Board of Education candidates, is that the way to say classroom students correctly? Okay, I want to start out with some off the record questions, and you have thirty seconds for your response. You do not have to take thirty seconds, but you can, and I will, as we've discussed, if you run out in a couple of seconds, I will stop. All right, because we're doing ahead of time, Elisa, you go first. First, on the record question, would you please go on the record, your assessment of the job being done by school superintendent Casey Wardensky?
We evaluate Dr. Wardensky on five different areas, and the goals were set between the board and Dr. Wardensky, and parameters were set on those goals. And the goals that we've set for him, he has achieved or overachieved on each one, so based on the goals we've given him, he has done a good job, and I would give him an A.
All right, Anson, you have thirty seconds to answer the same question.
In terms of superintendent Wardensky's achievements, I want to say that, in my opinion, he has lacked in terms of his ability to communicate effectively with the board and with the citizens in large, and I'd like to see him bring issues to the board, such as this NSA spying case that's going on now with the city, I think that that should have been brought to the board beforehand, and effective communication needs to be, one of his goals going forward, and it is not.
Okay, Anson, this question is for you, once again, thirty seconds to go on the record. Do you see schools in District Three as being an example of how every school in the system should be, or do you see the schools in the district as an example of a problem to be addressed?
District Three schools in Huntsville have historically been much better than the other schools in the district. I believe that Grissom has been in the past one of the shining stars of this state in terms of its academic excellence and student engagement, and I can see, as evidenced by slipping in the National Merit Semifinalists in Grissom, that there is room for improvement, and we need to address those issues and that reality.
All right, Elisa, do you see schools in District Three as being an example of how every school in the system should be, or do you see the schools in the district as an example of a problem to be addressed?
Every school in District Three is performing well, and one of the reasons is because we have the most engaged parents in the city. Students are going to be far more successful, their mom and dad are engaged in their education, and we enjoy that type of engagement here in South Huntsville. There are always going to be challenges in every school, and we work together, we rise to meet those challenges, we have discussions, we involve our parents, so that way we can make educated and wellfounded decisions for our students.
Okay, thank you, candidates, now we're going to get some on the record questions from students, this is Suzanne Bailey's government classes, her AP government classes at Grissom, Gwen Lindland has the first question. She wants to give the answer in thirty seconds, and Anson, why don't you take this one first?
Do you support an increase in the teacher pay scale to be more competitive with other local school districts?
Under Dr. Wardensky, there have been policies initiated which has reduced the total pay that teachers are making in Huntsville, and there were factors in flight and retirement of teachers from this district, in that the intellectual capital of a career educator is priceless, because those skills that a career educator learns are really what make a difference in child's education, including parental involvement, so I would want to address that issue.
All right, Elisa, would you answer the same question?
We can't make a blanket decision for pay increase now to expect that to happen over twenty years, we have to evaluate the budget each year to see whether or not there's adequate funding involved. One way we've increased income to teachers is by providing them with stipends for math team coaches, football team coaches, academic team coaches, so that they receive extra compensation for the extra time that they invest in our children. Teachers are never going to receive what they deserve, they are highly valued, however, we have to make sure that we have enough money to keep the lights on as well.
All right, thank you. Next question from a student, Camilla Toss. Candidates, you have thirty seconds to go on the record, and Elisa, why don't you do this one first?
Do you support the current practice of offering financial incentives to students for reaching benchmark scores on high stakes tests like the ACT and AP?
This practice started with Bemsi and A-plus college ready, where they were giving AP students that took a math, science, or English class a hundred dollars, and their teacher a hundred dollars if that student scored a college ready score. When that went away, they decided, the specific schools decided to institute it for ACT testing as well, and that money can be used, it's a very expensive process, that money can be used for enrollment fees, it can be used for all the different various schools that you have kids going in college. Do you support it? Our kids work hard, our teachers work hard.
All right, Anson.
I absolutely believe that positive reinforcement is an effective technique in the learning process, and that's what this initiative is, is positive reinforcement for students. I prefer, actually, it not be taxpayer money, but I embrace the spirit of the program. The only issue is that the implementation has been mishandled, some students did not receive the correct amount of money, especially here at Grissom High School, and some students received too much, some received too little, and I'd like to see the AP reimbursement to be implemented at Grissom as well.
All right, candidates, now we're going to answer some in-depth questions, you'll have one minute for your response to these questions. This first one is for you to answer. One of the complaints about the Huntsville school system is the lack of diversity in the schools. As a new board member, what would you do to make schools more diverse, and what do you think the voters in District Three want?
Well, I think that the voters in District Three want strong neighborhood schools, and diversity in schools should be dependent upon the composition of the neighborhoods in which those schools lie. It is not, I don't believe the job of the government to gerrymander districts to reach a specific quota of one way or the other, so in terms of the job of the government schools to promote diversity, I'd say that the best way to do that is to educate people in the community, and educate students to be accepted in different cultures, but in terms of forcing those, I guess, what the desegregation does is force racial quotas in schools, I don't agree with that, because the neighborhood school model is the best model for education , or see, if you look at what has happened in North Huntsville, the neighborhood school model has been abandoned, students from those areas are bused to South Huntsville, and we all know what has happened in those communities with the schools they had declined, and I don't want to see that for South Huntsville.
All right, Elisa, as a new board member, what would you do to make schools more diverse, and what do you think the voters in District Three want?
I think we need to redefine what we mean by diverse. In Alabama, diverse is black or other. We know, just looking at Miss Bailey's students that are here sitting in the front rows, that that diversity extends far beyond that. Some of our schools in Huntsville, in South Huntsville, are some of the most diverse in the city, White Spur and Grissom both have a very diverse student population, I think we need to redefine what it means. The desegregation does require that our standard population be reflective of our city population, which is about seventy percent other, thirty percent black. It does not require that our schools do that, it does require that we do have some diversity, and I support that, because through diversity, our kids grow, they're not going to walk out into an all-white and all-black world when they graduate from high school and graduate from college, and we need to learn how to get along better, so I do support diversity.
Okay, Elisa, this one is for you first, and once again, it's one minute to answer. As the system works to pull academics up in other parts of the city, what should be done to make sure that academic standards remain high in District Three schools?
We need to make sure that we support those high standards, we need to make sure we keep rigorous standards in place so that our kids can excel. One of the controversies that came up was the difference in textbooks. When teachers at Grissom would teach something, they would say, no, this book is not rigorous enough, we need a different book. That wasn't happening all over the city. One of the reasons why we're as successful as we are is that we have maintained high standards here, and I would support continuing those high standards. Additionally, we need to make sure that we support our teachers as they're teaching these AP classes, we need to provide them with the adequate professional development, so that not only are they fully equipped to teach the class, but they're also fully equipped to help all their students go through the process and do well on their tests. So I support AP, I want to continue those classes, I want to grow them, I want to make sure we get the professional development that we need, and that we maintain rigorous high standards in South Huntsville.
All right, Anson, as the system works to pull academics up in other parts of the city, what should be done to make sure that academic standards remain high in the schools in this district?
Well, I had a conversation with a wonderful teacher here at Grissom this afternoon, and I'm going to keep her name undisclosed to protect her privacy, but her concerns are probably, I think, are really mattered, because she's the one on the front line of the classroom, and us on the school board, we're not experts on anything, it's the teachers in the classroom that are the real experts. And she's concerned about the benchmark testing, and other constant testing that's used to evaluate teachers, and not really used to assess knowledge of students. I think that we need to go to the teachers in the classroom and respect their opinions more, because many teachers that I've spoken with, they feel as though that their opinions are not being addressed. I would like to see us move away, like I said, from the teach-to-test model that we have adopted under Dr. Wardensky's leadership, and go back to teaching individual students, both at the higher end, the lower end, and the middle end of the academic achievement spectrum.
Okay, now we're going to answer some students, in-depth questions from students from this Bailey's class. Matt Terry has the first question, once again, candidates, you'll have one minute to answer, and Anson, why don't you take the first question first?
What is your position on magnet schools? For example, on the theater and dance program reps here at Grissom, threat by consolidation of performing arts and Lee?
Well, the magnet school program is a reflection of the desire of the Huntsville City school system to get out of one of the longstanding desegregation order. If you look at the steps taken by other school districts across this country, magnet schools set up in minority areas of the city to draw students from majority schools to those schools as part of the plan, and to be honest with you, in those districts, many of them have been a failure. I don't want to see Grissom High School lose its dance program, because Lee High School has to have the magnet for performing arts. Our neighborhood schools need to have excellent educational opportunities for all our children, and I don't think that they need to be forced to the other side of the city, or sent to the other side of the city to get the kind of education that they deserve. When policies are strong, neighborhood schools are adopted, our community can effectively support our neighborhood schools, and the parents and teachers will be more involved in the process.
All right, Elisa, the same question, one minute to answer.
I strongly support the fine arts here at Grissom High School. We spent considerable amount of time with the PTA here in the building committee to make sure that our new auditorium would be large enough to house everyone, that there would be dance practice space for our dance group, that there would be theater space. We've made sure that we've done what we can to maintain those programs here. Those programs are in every high school, those programs are part of the high school experience, and we don't need to relegate that away to another school. The students that want to pursue a Juilliard-type education can go to a magnet school to do that. However, we have excellence here, we need to celebrate that excellence, we need to expand on that excellence. The difference that's going to happen between the theater program at Lee and the theater program at Grissom is, Ms. Marsh is an English teacher, and she does a fantastic job with her theater program, more than likely will have someone who's a dedicated theater major as their teacher. That would be the difference in the star, but however, we need to make sure that we continue our programs here, our kids are getting scholarships as a result of it, and sound design and things like that, we need to keep them strong.
Okay, another question from the students, this time Audrey Kelly will have the question, and candidates, you'll have one minute to answer the question, and Elisa, why don't you take this one first?
Students in Huntsville City schools are being constantly tested. Do you support the continued use of standardized benchmark testing and star testing for students?
I would like to see a way where we can assimilate some of these tests into fewer tests. If there's two or three tests that are evaluated for the same things, let's kind of incorporate that, maybe make the test five minutes longer, but then have three less tests on the year. I think there's bound to be a way we can do it, we have a bright bunch of people, we need to find a way to streamline testing, so that our kids are not constantly testing. The other thing we need to do is find a way to make a more effective process. Miley, especially since I've had an OEP, and it was happening during testing at Challenger Middle, and we had to sit there, we had to wait till everybody was out in the hallway before we could leave the room, the kids couldn't leave the room until the tests were collected, the council was going from classroom to classroom for waiting tests, it was about an hour and a half process for a fifteen-minute test. So the test itself was not long, the process was very tedious, we need to find ways to make that faster, so the kids can get in and out of it quicker, and we need to find ways to streamline tests that we have fewer.
All right, Anson's return.
I would like to see a return to individualized education, where the teacher in the classroom, who has a relationship with the students, does more of the evaluation, as opposed to a standardized one-size-fits-all system, which we have adopted. I've spoken with several students, and they're concerned, because they feel like all they're doing is learning how to take tests. And I want to go back to the model we have before, I mean, Huntsville, Alabama, is the city that sent, you know, America to the moon, we had academic excellence then, and if we go back to the tried and true methods that we use to teach mathematics and English to those individuals, I believe that our city will flourish. To answer the question, I do honestly believe that teaching to the test, and the constant star test in which my son has to go through, does not actually benefit the education processes. A lot of times the teachers don't even know what's on those tests, so how can they possibly teach?
Okay, now we're getting to the round where we have questions from the candidates for their opponent, and we're going to begin with a question by Anson, for you and Elisa. You have one minute to respond, and feel free if you need to stop to take a drink of water if they still. On two occasions over the past few years, political lobbying materials have been sent home to school with children. Do you think it is appropriate to use the schools to push a legislative agenda?
When the agenda is about education, we need to make sure we educate parents about what's going on. We're sending information out, whether it's through PTA, whether it's through the Chamber of Commerce, whatever, we're sending information out to the parents, so that the parents can be aware of education issues. One of those issues was our calendar bill. No one was happy that we were being relegated to a mandated calendar because of tourism, and then it came to the tourism committee in Montgomery rather than to the education committee. If you don't get that information out to parents, they're unable to calm voice their opinions, and we find that the legislative aspect of what's going on is extremely important, we need to make sure we empower parents to help make decisions for their children, and let their legislators know how they feel. So yes, I do support sending information home, if you have boys like me, a lot of times that information ends up on the floor of the backseat of the van, but nevertheless, it's important to get that information pushed out, so you know what's going on, and so you can make good choices coming back.
All right, Anson, you have thirty seconds, there's some rebuttal, what did Elisa just say?
This issue is actually the reason why I started paying attention to local politics, because my son received a flyer in school from his teacher that asked me to contact my legislator and tell them to support a legislative issue. And when I read that, I thought, well, this can't be legal, I pay taxes to my government to, you know, allow my son to go to school, so how can they turn around and tell me to support specific legislative issues or political issues? And I believe that it's grossly inappropriate, and I don't understand why my public doesn't see that as well.
All right, this question is from Elisa for Anson. Anson, you have been a strong advocate of the Accountability Act, wanting to become a school choice act. This would allow students from all public schools, whether failing or hot performing, to receive taxpayer money for private school tuition. As a supporter of parental school choice, and someone who is running to be a school board representative for public schools, would you choose to send your children, to young children, to public home or private school? You have one minute to answer this question.
Well, I am a product of public schools. My children, one of them goes to public school now, and the other two will go to public school when they're old enough. If I feel like my children aren't receiving an appropriate education in the public school system, then I would very much like to send them to a private school, but I'm not in an economic position where I can do that, I'm not an independently wealthy individual. So would I like to have the right to take my tax money that's being spent on my son to a private school? Absolutely, I would, if my children's needs weren't being met, but the reason I'm running for school board is because I want our own schools to be strong, I want every child, regardless of their economic condition, to have an opportunity to excel as an adult, because that's what we're doing here, we're not raising children, we're raising adults who will have to be able to make their own decisions when they get out of the real world. And I support the Alabama Accountability Act school choice, because I love individual liberty and individual freedom.
All right, Elisa, you have thirty seconds for rebuttal.
The Alabama Accountability Act applies to schools that are failing schools, schools that, six years ago, before the law went into place, had poor scores, and even though a lot of those schools have turned around, we won't know until 2017, the steps they have to take to get off of that list. So schools could be on a failing list for twelve years based on something that happened when the senior in high school was in first grade. The Accountability Act was meant to be a flexibility act to give schools the ability to flex out of earmarks, to flex out of cumbersome legislation, so that they can move and act, and act quickly to help their schools. The Accountability Act in helping failing schools is actually undermining public schools, and it should be rethought.
Okay, this question is from Anson for Elisa. Dr. Wardensky's policy of monitoring students' social media has been secret, and therefore the pumping to this program has also been secret. Some estimates of the program's cost range from one-half to one million dollars. Do you think that it is appropriate to require citizens to guess or estimate costs of programs within the school system? Elisa, you have a minute to answer.
One of the greatest differences between my opponent and I is that he makes his decisions and his comments based on rumor, based on Facebook posts, based on gossip, and I make my decisions based on facts. So I pulled the records myself, and the fact is, we've spent $157,000 on the monitoring program. TNW has a contract that was invested, that we started in 2012, and that contract is for multiple things. We purchased a software program called CULT. It is an inventory system that we inventory, every item that we have in the school system. That was a $600,000 endeavor for the software, but also for the manpower to inventory everything in the schools. TNW also provided us with someone to install all the active, world-owned learning walls in the schools. She went around to every single classroom, made sure it was installed properly, that was about $200,000. The gentleman who does our monitoring is a month-to-month contract, just like our attorneys, it is an outwit, we can discontinue it at any time.
Thank you, Elisa. Anson, you have thirty seconds for rebuttal.
I want the audience here to realize that my opponent just broke news to you regarding information that really should have been brought forward to the school board in a public meeting. Now, ask yourself how she would have access to that information if she weren't the candidate that the superintendent wanted to be on the board. You cannot possibly hold a school board superintendent accountable if, you know, you're in his pocket already. Please, Elisa, don't sit there, I have a few seconds left. I want to say that I am an accountant, I trade, I'm a profession, and I will attack the school board by relevant facts and circumstances of issues.
All right, thank you, Anson, and once again, please don't do that. Okay? No more demonstrations, no matter what you think, you can do an animal lobby afterwards, but not in here. All right, this question is from Elisa for Anson. You've been a critic of Huntsville City Schools' meal program, despite the fact that it doesn't cost our district anything, it actually brings in two million dollars a year. Why would you deny students the opportunity to have a successful start to their school day, which reaps rewards both academically and behaviorally, and to take advantage of existing resources to do so? Anson, you have one minute to answer.
I am not a critic of feeding children, unlike what my public wants you to say. I feed my own children every day, and I understand the value of a strong meal at the beginning of a school day. The program that I was speaking about is one where twenty schools in our system are now offering free breakfast and free lunch to every student in the school, without regard to their economic means. And I want to know why those type of economic and if it will, their programs need to be brought to the school system. There are programs in existence already which address this issue, and I don't think that, saying that it's not our tax dollars locally that are paying for this, because whose tax dollars are I paying for? Yeah, it's yours, because just because it comes from a federal program doesn't mean that you're not paying for it. I, like I said, I'm an accountant, and I look at taxes all day.
All right, thank you, Anson, Elisa, you have thirty seconds for rebuttal.
It's a federal program that's been in place since 1968, and in the PTA form at Huntsville High, Anson's specific quote was, if we feed them, they're going to get used to eating, and then what will they do? Kindergartners should be used to eating, kindergartners should have full bellies when they go in to learn, because if they do not have food in their tummy, they cannot learn. And although, Anson says he is a tax accountant, he got most of his figures as far as the NSA issue with TNW from Facebook posts, and there are major errors in calculation in things just as simple as what the general fund balance is, and if you can't add numbers like that properly, then there are more issues than in text.
All right, thank you, Elisa. Okay, now we're going to move to questions from the audience, and we have, we have seven, and we have plenty of time to answer. Okay, first question, Anson, why don't you take this one first? Thirty superintendent's in North Alabama have fought a suit against my government over- Thirty superintendents in North Alabama have filed a suit against my government overturning the Accountability Act. What do you say about that? The rest of the questions, do you support or oppose the act? I think we know where you stand. How do you feel about the fact that thirty superintendents have to have followed Anson?
Thirty superintendents are looking to protect their bureaucracy, because a superintendent is first and foremost at your credit, and I think that's something that seems to be lost in translation here. The Alabama Accountability Act offers individuals the ability to make more decisions about their own children. Parents having more rights over their own children, and I support that 100%. The Alabama Accountability Act should not be followed by the education establishment of a budget, but it should be embraced because it will increase funding per pupil if it is avoided. And that's all I have to say about this. I'm just a little tired of voting right now. I don't know how far I've gone.
You've got one minute. Okay, all right, let me make this clear. For these questions, every time we need to answer, every time. Elisa, your turn only. The question about the superintendents, thirty superintendents suing to overturn the Accountability Act.
I believe that it was someone else that actually filed it last week, but thirty superintendents have just signed on an agreement to it. There's a question about the constitutionality of it. We do have systems in Alabama where there is horrible education, where the only option is public, is private education, I'm sorry, systems like the government where bad things are happening. That is not Huntsville, Alabama. We are making great strides and great changes in what's going on. MLK is leading the nation in turnaround, so we need to evaluate it system by system, and it's not what's going to work at Huntsville. There's $40 million that's been taken out of the education budget, and while the education budget is large, $40 million is a lot of teachers. $40 million is a lot of money for libraries that haven't been funded for seven or eight years. So that does hit us, that does take away money, that impacts teacher raises, it impacts everything as far as education goes.
Okay, the next question, Elisa, you'll take this one first. You have one minute. What are your views on science education, particularly teaching evolution and global climate change? Elisa.
Science standards will probably be coming out in January or February. I work a little with Baptist Church. I would like to also see creationism taught. I think our children are smart enough to evaluate all the options and make their own decisions. Science is a very active part of our community. We need to make sure our children have science education, whether it's physics, biology, chemistry, whatever it is, we need to make sure they're invested in that. However, I think we need to teach everything.
All right, Anson, would you like to question again?
Yeah, give that to me again.
Okay, you have one minute. What are your views on science education, particularly teaching evolution and global climate change?
Well, global climate change and evolution are both hot button issues. They've been highly politicized, but there is science involved in both of those concepts, and scientific aspects should be taught. But I do believe that there is a role here, and that is the role of parents to have somewhat of a say over this process, because those can be religious issues and highly difficult to discuss issues, and I think that if parents were involved in the decision-making process for their children, I would support that. If a parent wants to say that they don't want their child to be taught something, then I think that the school system should be able to respect that. I learned at school, and when I was in ninth grade, our teacher decided not to teach evolution, even though it was in the textbook, and I was perfectly comfortable with that, because if I wanted to learn about it, it was in the book, and I could read it myself.
Okay, next question. Anson, why don't you take this one first? Have you ever made dues to or accepted contributions from the AEA or its local affiliate? Please describe your relationship, if any, with those working sections.
Well, the AEA is local affiliate, the HEA set out a questionnaire to all the candidates who are running for the August 26th general election, and in that packet questionnaire, it was requested that you disclose whether or not you wanted their endorsement, so you could tell them whether or not you wanted their endorsement or not. And I, being a very strong conservative, chose not to seek their endorsement, but I still answered their questions, and I reached out to them and said I would love to sit down with them and discuss issues with them, because as a point, in fact, teachers' unions play a role in our system, and they deserve respect because they are the voice of the teachers, albeit their policies are sometimes misguided. In my opinion, they should be respected as the voice for individual teachers and teachers as a whole. I made it a point to reach out to as many teachers as I could in the course of my campaign.
All right, Elisa, your turn, you have one minute.
Okay. I am not a member of the AEA or the HEA. I never paid dues to them. As Anson said, we all did, all five of us in District Three went through interviewing processes with multiple different packs in town, and one of them was the HEA. The HEA gave me a $2,000 donation Saturday before the election. I found out that it was already posted online in different blogs that I had received the money before I even knew that I received the money. HEA and PTA have been juxtaposed on many, many issues. We sit across the table from each other, most notably when I sat on the Policy Committee for Huntsville City Schools as one of the parent representatives. There were fifteen people on the committee, and the other parent representative was a school employee who was also an HEA representative. So we've been at odds in many different things. However, the people that they represent are the people that we most value, and that are our counselors. I know every Grissom High School student is going to know who Sherry Krigger is, because she's going to help you get aid for school, scholarships for school. There are nurses, our teachers, and our assistants and our staff, so we value the people in the organization.
Okay, thank you. All right, Anson, this question, you first. Which of the schools in District Three have you spent volunteer time supporting, which one got the most of your support and why?
Farley Elementary School, it is the school where my oldest son attended. I was the, let me see, I worked on the BTA as an officer for a few years. I worked with the BTA as a chairperson on different committees. I volunteered my time in the classroom and the lunchroom to assist teachers for several years. My focus has been on my son, my oldest son, because he has autism, and I wanted to be with him as much as I possibly could, and when he started to go to school, I transferred my efforts into the BTA in school, Farley Elementary. Through that process, I got to know three different principals, scores of teachers, and how difficult it really is day-to-day in school, especially to engage parents in learning, which is the key to improving education in Alabama.
Go ahead, Elisa.
I volunteered here at Grissom, I volunteered at Mountain Gap, I volunteered at Farley Elementary, and I volunteered at Challenger outside of the system. I volunteered at Highlands, I volunteered at MLK, I volunteered at Hampton Cove, I've been at many, many schools. I too have a son with autism, and I was the room mom for the class at Farley, and spent a lot of time, I attended every field trip family because my son has seizures, so the school had the option of hiring a nurse so that my son could go, I would go and keep them from that expense. So I invested myself in special ed, I invested myself in achieving, high achieving situations as well here at Grissom High School. I've spent the last seven years of my life volunteering extensively, and some of those weeks were as long as sixty-hour weeks with volunteer work. I am 100% dedicated to the students in our city and to making sure that they receive a quality education where their general students or special ed students need additional help.
All right, thank you. This is the law, and Elisa, why don't you take this one first? Thomas Jefferson High School in Northern Virginia is well-known for its national science and math programs areas that Huntsville excels in. This school has a, I believe, I may be this correct, a $7 million fund for donations. How do you see getting an equivalent one for Huntsville, a city that has one of the highest incomes in the South? Elisa.
About four years ago, I had the opportunity to go to Fairfax and tour TJ High School, and it is astonishing. It was an old, beat-up building when I arrived, they were in the middle of a fire alarm. There were tour buses, both students and teachers from all over the world coming to see what TJ is doing. They have, and I don't know the correct word, I'll have to ask the science teacher, they have machines that take a chemical and they spin it down and find the lowest common denominator. That machine was $900,000. They have a PTA, the PTA is not raising money for that. They have a foundation that raises money. It is amazing what these kids are doing. They're putting out college-level work. AB Calculus has taken freshman year. The thing about TJ is TJ is an application school, and they draw from about 12 counties in Northern Virginia, and they take 400 students for each class. Of those 400, I believe we were there, they said 250 were National American Semifinalists. So it's amazing what they're doing, but they have to have credit funds to get it all done. We just have to establish a foundation.
All right, thank you, Elisa. Anson, that's a pretty long question. Do you need to hear it again?
No, I think I got it, Steve. I just first want to say it's kind of convenient that my opponent had a question about a school in another state that you've been to. I have not been to that school. I cannot identify with all of the programs in that school or address any of the specifics. But what I can say is that throwing money into the mix, of course, will help, but the real goal in Huntsville is to adopt a model similar to what was done at Lincoln Elementary before it was closed, which is reach out to community organizations, reach out to churches, reach out to volunteers, and identify the address of students, because volunteer work is sometimes worth more than a checkbook. And as an accountant, I have seen firsthand how to account for nonprofit and how to give phone for those type of entities, and I would be very open to starting a foundation similar to what Elisa spoke up here in Huntsville. I think that we should do that.
Okay, the next question, I'd like to upfront say I'd like to not have any demonstration if you're excited about this question. And Anson, why don't you take this one first? Questioner said, writes, "I am voting so my voice can be heard. I am against Common Core. How is my representative, would you ensure my voice and concerns will be heard, those of us against Common Core are not being heard?"
Well, I want to say that I am opposed to Common Core. I am opposed to Common Core because I value local decisions in education. I'm running for a local school board seat, so that should be self-evident. Common Core standards were developed by a group of experts in New England. The experts on the panel contained one mathematics expert and one English language expert when they were developing the math and English standards, and neither one of those experts signed off on the standards. And facts like that can be brought out into the public fray, because an honest debate has not been had on the issue of Common Core, it's been used as a political wedge issue. And I want to get away from that and use my microphone on the school board to address this issue. It's a state law, and I'll only be one voter, but I will make sure that your voice is heard if I am on the school board.
All right, that's the same question.
Even being one note, the decision is not made at city level, it's made at the state level. Only the state legislature, only the state school board is the one that made that decision. The legislature has talked about trying to revoke it before, but it hasn't happened. We have other states in the country that have revoked Common Core in name only. They have done what we've done, that we have the Alabama College Career Standards. They've taken what's in Common Core, the best of Common Core, and they've added other standards that are Alabama standards here in our state and core in the other states in Indiana and Louisiana and other places. Common Core is a set of standards that's a little higher than what we wanted before, and it's not of indulgent. We need to continue to raise those standards. The two gentlemen that Anson mentioned that would sign on by it is because they didn't think it went far enough, they thought we needed to go farther. It is stretching our kids. If you speak to a teacher here at Grissom High School, and I will mention her name, Cindy Rogers, AB Calculus teacher, she will say it is hard, but the kids are getting it. Our kids are learning fast, they're learning on their feet, they have every capability of massive knowledge and doing successful work with them.
Okay, the last question from the audience, my favorite question of the night. Questioner writes, "Why are students not allowed to vote for..." By the way, Anson, why don't you take this one first? "Why are students not allowed to vote for who's on the school board? The students attend the schools that the board is running." This is in caps. "It's the first step of young people learning to exercise their power to vote, and it is the statement, 'Power to the people.'"
I'm going to go out there and say that that was a student that said that. I am astonished by the students that I've spoken with that are in Grissom High School. They're very engaged in the political process, and I admire their willingness, especially tonight, to come here and help set this forum up and provide their own insight. In terms of voting age, which is, I think, the question addressed here, I believe that 18 is the voting age, because this is serious stuff, and your brain has to be completely fully developed, you have to have some life experiences under your belt before you can go out there and address the issues that are concerning our city and our state and our country. But I do really admire the willingness to come and vote, and when you turn 18, please come vote.
All right, Elisa.
Last day to register for the school board election. As a new voter, it was last Thursday. If any of the students were 18, they could have done it then, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't go do it now if you're 18. You have general elections coming up. The only way that you can form your future, you can help in the legislative process, is to actually vote. The very first time I voted, I was a senior in college, and I voted for President Ronald Reagan then at the student union office where we had registration polls there. So I would encourage you to do that. I'm sorry that you can't vote, because I think a lot of you are very wise kids, very good thinkers. I know Ms. Bailey's put me through your paces in her AP Gov. class, her AP Econ. class, but I would encourage you to make sure that you pull that paper down off Huntsville City, not City Schools, Huntsville City, sorry, click on Huntsville Government, and then go down to elections and make sure that you register to vote, because it's an important process, and you have the ability to make the decision.
Okay, time now for a closing statement, because of decision late before we start tonight. Anson, you get to go first with your 60 seconds closing statement.
Well, as you already know, there's an election coming up, wait for tomorrow, October 7th, and you have the opportunity to make a decision about who will represent your district on the Huntsville City School Board. Now, there's a lot of people in this room, so what you need to do is go out and get a friend, because we only had 96% of the, I would not participate last time on the August 26th election, so that means 4% roughly participated in the election, and I'd like to see that change, because government's not going to represent you unless you are choosing who represents you. I want to, because I want to see transparency in the school system. I think that as an accountant, I'm competent to look at the numbers in the system and ensure that we only have $20 million to dedicate and have school board members who really didn't have answers as to why. I want to use that expertise and leverage that as the taxpayers, the children, and the parents, the teachers, and thank you for your consideration.
All right, Elisa, 60 seconds.
One of the many questions we've been asked at the numerous forums we've done is how many school board meetings have you attended? And in the last six or seven years, I've only missed 10 or so, and there are two a month plus a few special meetings thrown in there. Anson has responded that he's attended two or three, and in the last, not the last, but one of the school board meetings he was at this summer, he decided the best way to exercise his voice was to throw papers up in the air and run out the room snickering with his brother. So he hasn't shown up, and when he does show up, he shows out. I'm here for one purpose, and that is for the children of Huntsville, to make sure they get a quality education. I'm not here for drama. If you want drama, then you need to vote for Anson. I can't pull results. I want our children to do well, I want our children to succeed, I want them to get great jobs, I want them to move back to Huntsville and continue to make this the fantastic place it is to live. Thank you very much.